Okay, thank you very much. Welcome, everybody. I'm calling to order this Board of Education meeting. It is Monday, April 17th, 2023. We're in the Nashua North Boardroom. It is 6:04 PM. Welcome, everybody. I see we have a crowd tonight. Before we go into roll call, just want to make sure that you guys know the ground rules of being participants in a board meeting. I see some people have posters. If you want to hang, post them up or show them up, you just have to be behind everybody. You can't obstruct anybody else's view. Something about it being a public meeting and everybody being able to see. So if you want to hold up signs, you just have to be in the back. When it comes time to public comment, we'll keep it to three minutes. I'll have a timer on, and then at 15 minutes, we'll vote to extend it in case people want to speak more. I think that's about it. If I forget something, I'm sure I will come back and tell you. But maintain decorum. You guys were fantastic last meeting. I enjoyed having you here. Now I will hand this over to Ms. Lampier. Can you please do the roll call?
Sure. Ms. Darling.
Here.
Ms. Raymond.
Here.
Mr. Claffey is not here. Ms. Brown.
Here.
Ms. Oden.
Here.
I am here. Ms. Johnson.
Present.
Ms. Bishop.
Here.
Ms. Gilio.
Here.
And we also have our student board members.
Here.
And Warren.
Here.
And we have Dr. Andreid, Dr. Sarfji, Mr. Poska, and Mr. Donovan. And, okay, we're all set.
Excellent. When you're done doing the prayer, Ms. Johnson, will you lead us in the pledge? Okay.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty of managing the educational institutions of our beloved city. In our common endeavors, may we find a spirit of unity and understanding which will enable us to face our multiple problems with an objective mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will be for the betterment and greater happiness of all of our fellow citizens. Amen.
I dedicate this to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undegowed, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. I will throw the floor right over to Dr. Andreid. We have a presentation in regards to KYPod.
So I'm going to move to the podium so we can do a co-presentation. So good evening, everyone. I'd like to introduce Amar Kumar from, he's the founder and director of KYPod Learning. And so tonight, we just want to really go over pilot and look for the endorsement from the BOE on moving forward on what we feel is a really alternative learning pathway for our Nashua students, especially at the middle school level. So our objectives tonight in looking at a pilot and a partnership, a private, public partnership, is to develop alternate pathways to provide greater flexibility and autonomy for some Nashua students. Develop innovative approaches to teaching and learning that can ultimately benefit all Nashua students and grow our enrollment by attracting students back into the Nashua School District who may be at risk of leaving. And this is especially around the middle school level. So we know, looking at our history, that students stay with us K through 5, and then in the middle school, start looking for alternatives, and then they come back at high school. So partner with KYPod, we're looking at a different way so that students can have voice and choice, and also a lot more of some agency in their... Turn the lights. So hand it over a little bit, and we can go back and forth with Amar on some of the program overview. So this upcoming year, we're looking to look at middle schools, about 24 students to be piloted in this program. Students will be using online adaptive curriculum such as Khan Academy, Lexia, Xurn, or VLEX. We're also looking at a partnership again with the NTU. So the students in this learning pod, which would be in the community, would still have access to NTU teachers. And they would serve as learning coaches and receive professional development through KYPod on what is a typical day. It won't be a typical middle school day, and we'll get to that in a second, but really, this program that'll be self-directed and self-paced by the students in some of their passions, and then they'll be able to, again, use VLEX, Khan Academy, Lexia, or Xurn to learn at their own pace and look at some projects of passion. And so then, again, KYPod would work with the school district to form more community partnerships that help students build real-world learning skills. Do you want to go over it?
Yeah, I'm happy to. Hi, good evening. My name is Amar Kumar. So the typical KYPod student day is very flexible. The idea here is that students drive their own learning journey within a group of their peers. Each day is led by a learning coach, who certainly, as the superintendent said, would be part of the teachers' group here. Just as an example agenda here, you know, the day starts at 8:00 AM. Students come in, they set a goal for themselves. The coaches help them set personal goals, which helps build executive functioning skills to make them successful in life. There's usually a morning brain challenge, either a puzzle or a Wordle, something where the group can engage together on something intellectual. Then we enter what we call our academic block. We have three of those throughout the day. Each of those is broken into 25-minute quote Pomodoro sessions. If you've heard of Pomodoros, they're intense periods of focus where students really put their minds to a goal and an objective, which could be completing an online lesson or writing an essay, completing a math worksheet. And then after 25 minutes, everyone takes a break together, sort of celebrates it, and then does it again for 25 more minutes. So we do that for about an hour, which you'd be so shocked by how much work gets done in these really intense focused sessions. So we do that in the morning, then we give them some time for a break. Our centers are always full of games and puzzles and things for students to do together so that they're building those social relationships that are just so important at these ages. We may do another academic block at 10:15, break for lunch, and then maybe have some independent reading time. We really encourage all of our students to become voracious readers, so they get to pick a book at their Lexile level. The coach provides them a lot of support in interpreting it and really making meaning. They work on it together as a group, so everyone's sort of coming along on each other's stories. Then they might do another academic block. And during those three academic blocks, our learning coaches, they are kind of floating around the room. They're ensuring that every student is on task. If a particular student is showing signs of struggle, they're sort of stepping in to say, let me help you, let's figure out what you might need more of. That could be a math tutoring lesson, it could be more reading help, it could be finding additional resources for them. So then what happens is, as most students are self-directed using these online curricula, it frees up the teacher to do a lot more one-on-one time. So it really accelerates progress for students. I hadn't planned to share this, but just yesterday, one of our students who started with us as an 11-year-old, reading at a second grade level, just tested into fourth grade seven months, in seven months. He made two years of reading progress in seven months. And that's, nothing secret to what we're doing, it's really around that one-on-one attention and the child being able to move at his own pace rather than being required to move at the general pace of a class. So for students who are really accelerated or really behind, this can be a life changer for them. And so the rest of the day is lots of enrichment activities, so science experiments, coding, anything that the students express as their interest, we bring that into the pod to help them take part in it. And then there's some social time as well to, again, build those relationships. So I'll pause there if there's anything.
Next slide. So ideally, we're working on a student profile of who might be most successful. And again, we want to make sure that the fit is right. So we're looking for students that have a desire to learn at a different pace than the rest of the class, have been successfully, you know, KYPod has been successfully serving both gifted students and students in remedial classes, as Amar just mentioned. We also need students to be self-initiated, like self-initiating on where they want to go. They have to take ownership and be empowered and have voice and choice and agency. So we want to make sure when we're starting to select students that their learning profile matches that self-starter, so that they do have some passion on growing, that the students also have unique interests that they're wishing to pursue. As Amar just kind of said, there's time built in that students can work independently on certain projects. And then there's also what we know that happens in middle school, that this might be a smaller learning environment for students at middle school whose middle school with 700, 800, 900 students is too overwhelming. So we noticed during COVID that there was many students who were being successful at home in remote learning, who weren't successful in the traditional building, but they found their voice in a smaller classroom on a screen, and then COVID ended and they were back in school and through, whether it was anxiety or other reasons, that the schools were too overwhelming and they'd lost their voice again. So we're thinking this might be an option for those students who might have anxiety issues at a school but are self-directed learners, that this might be a good opportunity for them. Again, that smaller learning pods style so that we can have students have their voice back. So what we're doing tonight is really looking at some feedback. I've been in touch with attorney Clausen. There's still, when we're coming up with a formal partnership, to make sure who's covering liability, transportation, food services, so we're working out those details. But tonight, we just want to make a presentation to the board on how are we moving forward and if there's any kind of initial concerns that you might come to mind. But we're seeing this as a connection and a pathway or another gateway for Nashua students to stay involved in a non-traditional way. So it goes back to our vision statement that students have access to great appropriate assignments, strong instruction, deep engagement, and teachers with high expectations every day in every class. And then this is the second part, is every student and family is an authentic partner and should have real opportunities to shape their experiences. So again, I think this partnership is putting those words into action and providing different gateways so that students have multiple choices to stay within the school district without looking to go outside the district to be highly successful. And then, do you want to get this one?
Just a little bit more about us. So we operate, these learning centers across the country, we're in four states, including New Hampshire. We have centers in Dover and Manchester already operating. They've been doing very well this past year. Essentially, our proposition is we want to create these wonderful community spaces where kids and families want to be. We want to hire really professional learning coaches that love kids and care about kids and want to do one-on-one time with those kids. And then we bring in tons of those enriching experience for students across their life, their school, and then really make it possible for them to make friendships. So that's why we exist.
So correct me if I'm wrong, this will be the first public school partnership in the four states. So we're going to be innovative with KYPod and see how this works. So we've also been working with the commissioner. So the first two years are fully funded. Going forward, so it will be reimbursed by the Department of Education so that we're able to conduct or collect some research on the success. And I know we will be successful, and so then how do we grow it moving forward? So we are looking, again, and have the endorsement from the Department of Education on this partnership because there might be some waivers that we might need, again, with, you know, whether it's teacher certifications or seat time or competencies. So we're coming through a number of those details right now that we can work out, but the commissioner is willing to work with us to navigate those obstacles. And then this last slide is really about the research, kind of moving forward and the success of KYPod had, especially around the learning sciences. So what we're looking tonight, and I know it's later on, is really just a recommendation or be making a recommendation to the board to continue our conversations, receive the board's endorsement to explore what that formal agreement would look like. It's already the end of April, and so we need to make sure that there's a couple of details we have to work out because before we know it, we have to find a space in the community. Again, this learning pod will not be in one of our schools, it could be on Main Street. And so really, community-focused, and we have to start recruiting students. So just timeline-wise, we just have to move with a little more urgency, and I think it would be unfair for Amar and his team if we're waiting to June and then we're starting to recruit or we're asking for the board endorsement then, and there's a couple of hiccups. So we wanted to come to you sooner than later so that we can move forward. So thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. Do we want to take, we can ask questions now. Are you going to be sticking around for the vote later?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. I'm thinking we can ask some questions, have some dialogue now, but if this is kind of new for all of us, we'll address it within the agenda, and we'll come back to it later for the vote, so if you guys have more questions or more thoughts on it. So we'll start off now with some comments and questions. Ms. Johnson, I saw your hand.
Thank you very much. This sounds very interesting. So it's almost like the learning part communities that are out there now. Am I correct? Also, how are we going to be getting these students if, are we going to do a lottery type of, like they do at charter schools?
Yeah, so that's the detail that we're looking at. So it would be an application process, looking at the profile of a successful student, and then, once we get those names, that we'll try to find a mix, but it'll be mostly a lottery.
So how many, would there be separated classrooms by grades, by age? And how many do we anticipate for, like, the school?
Yeah, I can take that. So we're expecting this to be 24 students in the first year, and we're keeping it focused on 6th through 8th grades. Generally, these learning pods are most effective when they're slightly mixed age. There's a lot more mentoring that happens from older to younger. There are fewer instances of bullying or negative social pressures when you have mixed-age groups. So we're going to have two groups, 12 each. Each of the groups will be led by one learning coach, and like I said, they'll be the 6th through 8th grades, and they'd be in one facility, which would be in the community in Nashua.
You know, it's almost like going back to the old schoolhouses, I guess, when you had mixed age groups and everybody like almost in one room, and there was success back then. I just would like to get a little bit more learning about it. There's nothing for us to see out there, so we can't kind of go visit a school and kind of see how it's operating. So that's, it's kind of like envisioning this.
Yeah, it's like the one-room schoolhouse with technology providing the curriculum so that one teacher doesn't have to do all of it. And I don't know if it's appropriate, but we do have sites in Dover and Manchester. We would love to welcome you to come see it and really experience it, talk to the families, the students, the learning coaches themselves.
Maybe we can go on the little yellow school bus to go out there. Thank you.
Well, certainly, what the recommendation tonight would be just for Dr. Andreid to start working on the contract negotiations, not necessarily start the work of it, but yeah, so it's the recommendation to start with a contract tonight. Mr. Farley?
Thank you. I would just like to say that my only problem with this is that I'm not a middle schooler who could benefit from this program because I think it actually sounds really awesome. And so I would like to just thank you, Mr. Kumar. I appreciate all the work you do and the opportunities you provide. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Raymond?
Thank you. Thank you for coming. Wait, I don't have my microphone lined up. Thank you for coming and speaking to us tonight. So I have a couple of questions about vetting, really, and one of it is for applicants. Will this program be open to students who have 504s and IEPs and other special needs? Because I know it can be difficult to make sure that we have that, those types of services provided in public charter schools, you know, and arranging that kind of transportation back and forth.
So that's our intent, that a 504 or an IEP wouldn't prohibit a student, as long as like, it would be, we would have to make sure it's the least restrictive environment. So if a student had more intense needs, that might not be the appropriate setting. But if there's a 504 or a learning disability or math and English goals in a student's IEP, it would be appropriate.
Okay, thank you. It's really important to me that we not exclude people from the process. And then the other question I have is regarding vetting of employees. So right now, if you want to work in one of our district buildings, you have to go through a series of, there's, you know, the application process, but you also have to go through a series of criminal background checks, you're fingerprinted. Will we continue to do that for individuals working in these learning pods?
Yes. And again, I've been working with, or had a conversation with Mr. Makku. I think having a teach, the two teachers in the union would lend the district to have the same vetting process. In full transparency, we would have a conversation with Mr. Makku as well because the teacher's workday might not look like a traditional middle school teacher's workday on planning periods or things like that, just their time off because they would have 12 students. It would almost look more like an elementary schedule than a middle school schedule.
Thank you. Ms. Lampier?
So I was concerned, because it says in the write-up, the children who are placed with KYPod and are not a good fit, that KYPod has the ability to not accept or unenroll a student. And that's not something that we're able to do in a public school. So I didn't know what kind of standards they would be, if they'd be written down, and also what kind of policies would you follow, kind of discipline, if students needed, like a guidance counselor, would there be someone there for that?
So we come up with a behavioral policy in partnership with the district, so it would be aligned as closely as possible to the district's policy. And any decision, if it only happened once in my whole time running this, is only determined if the, sort of, the whole pod is impacted. So there's one time that I can recall where one child was just unfortunately not a good fit and was really disrupting the experience for every other student, so we had to have a conversation with that family. And if ever that came up in this type of partnership, it would be the school district's decision. We would make that recommendation, but we would really want them to be a partner in helping decide that.
Are you saying that in all the four states that you have pods in, that only one student has ever been asked to leave?
Involuntarily, where we said, we can't have you return here. Every other time, it's been either a great fit or the family themselves said, I see that this pod isn't a good fit for my child. There are reasons, right? I'm not, I know that it's not possible to design the perfect environment for every child. So I know what I can do well and what I can't do well. We're very transparent upfront about that. You saw the slide on that. And part of that means that when a child is not being served well, we're very honest with the family, that we are failing your child and this is not a good fit. And thankfully, the results of a partnership with the school district is they still have a wonderful home to go back to in the school district. And so we would have that conversation together.
Okay, thank you.
Along those lines, I think we would still, because the student still would be a Nashua student, that they would still have access to a school counselor or other type of services. I think where we want to be careful on, if a student misses 90 days of the pod, you know, they're taking up a spot for another person, so we need that flexibility along those same lines, this might not be a good fit, so for those 24 students. And that happens in different classes, especially at the high school. If a student's not doing well, we might change their schedule.
I'm going to call it myself. How do we invite students in if we have two teachers, if they are non-English-speaking students?
Yeah, I think this would probably need to be one of the considerations in the selection process. If we feel like the two, if the two speakers, two teachers, if one of them is bilingual and can support the student, fantastic. But if they're not able to, then I think that would be a consideration as part of the selection criteria.
Okay.
Yeah, no, and again, I think it's the same thing along the lines of students with special needs, and if a student is a newcomer, that might not be at the appropriate setting because of the amount of services that the student will need, might not be able to be serviced at the learning pod.
Did I see someone's hand over here? Ms. Brown and then Ms. Oden.
How, can you give us the numbers of how many students you have on 504 IEPs in each of your pods? And you don't need to give it tonight, I could have the information later, but I would like to have those numbers.
Yeah, I can definitely look into that. I can look for that for you, absolutely. The slight complications going through my head is, because we are not, this is our first public school partnership, typically for these families that we're working with, they're either enrolled in another online school or they might be registered as homeschoolers, so we don't always have an official IEP or 504 from them. What we do have is when families voluntarily share that. So I'm happy to provide that number. I can look into that. Is when we know that a family has said, my child has an IEP or 504 from their public school, and my, just top-of-the-mind guess is around 20 to 30%.
Okay. I must have misunderstood. I thought you were working with Manchester School District.
No, we have a pod in Manchester.
Oh, it's not with the school district.
Community pod, so anyone from the community is welcome to enroll. Generally, we attract families who are registered as homeschoolers. They may have left the school district in the last few years. And we sort of, we were joking earlier, we call that reluctant homeschoolers. They don't want to homeschool, but they felt like that was the right thing to do. And a lot of them are saying, okay, we want a pathway back into the school. And that's really the genesis of this partnership. You know, the pilot program is to prove something eventually that could scale to every Nashua student who wants it.
And you have certified teachers. Do you look for teachers within the school district if you're working with the school district?
No. So since Manchester is an independent program, we can't hire teachers within the school district. But we always look for teachers who have teaching experience in schools. So they've all taught in the last year to five years in a school district.
So it's our expectation that the two teachers in Nashua will be certified teachers, which will be different from the other pods.
Not certified to teach here in Nashua?
No, they will be certified, yep.
But they're Nashua teachers?
That's our intent, yes.
And who would pay them?
The school department. So we're being reimbursed by the Department of Education for their salaries.
Okay, so we're not going to cover that salary, really? We're going to pay them and be reimbursed?
Yes.
I have to say, I have a lot of concerns about this. It's very novel, haven't experienced. I would like to do some more research on this. I have concerns. It sounds good, but I'd like to, I'd like to spend some time researching this. So at this point, I'm concerned. Thank you.
Ms. Brown?
I feel quite different than Dottie, which is rare. So I actually think this is a really creative way to address our continued drop in enrollment to try to keep students here in the district so we can continue to service our kids here. I like the fact that you have locations in Manchester and Dover because you've got an urban location and a slightly more rural district. Our mission is to develop the whole child, and that doesn't look the same for every student. So if some of our kids are going to thrive in a big school like Elm Street, some kids are really going to struggle. And I think some of the takeaways we can take away from remote learning is that some kids actually did find it successful. And to ignore those, that group of students and not allow them the opportunity to thrive in a more flexible environment, really, we have a really good, we actually, this is not an opportunity. And we're not talking about changing our entire learning model to a remote education system. We're talking about 25, or maybe two years from now, 50 kids out of 9,000. That's not an enormous number, you know? And I think it's kind of perfectly what we need is to, it's kind of providing an individual education plan for students that maybe typically wouldn't even have one. And, you know, why not do it on the state's dime instead of ours for two years? I really appreciate both of you guys being willing to work together to look outside the box to particularly serve students with, like, very high anxiety. I think this is, fits very well into that, or that are very, you know, that need some different educational needs. So, thank you.
Would they, I just, sorry, go ahead. I was just going to ask, would they, kind of along the lines of meeting the kids where they're at, but also still having them be a part of the public school system and kind of the data that we're able to show with the progress of our students? Do the KYPod kids still do all of the state testing, or is that separate because it's considered a unique curriculum?
No, they'll still do all the state testing.
Okay. Gilio?
You have a couple of questions. Would these middle school students be allowed to perform in athletic programs for the middle schools? And what about music and art? And how do they get all of that in your little pod?
Yeah, so our enrichment block- Yeah, so, our enrichment blocks, we have a daily enrichment block where we pick things such as music, art, coding, theater, dance, outdoor activities. So, all, the entire day, every day is planned to introduce each of these concepts. And if a particular group of 12 students is really much more interested in music, then we would add extra blocks for them for that. So, we can just personalize it a lot more. But we ensure there's a broad base of the core enrichments, and then we go deeper where the students show more interest.
Ms. Lamphier?
I read in the, in the presentation we got with our packet that there would be no transportation provided for students. So, that means that students that, you know, they're, they might not be a two-car family and might not be able to attend at all.
Yeah. So, that's one that we're exploring. So, right now, we don't, the bus routes, but we would have to look into that. That's a detail that and, and food services. We're just, we need to iron out. But right now, there's not a dedicated bus run. We don't have a location of what that might look like, especially if we have 24 students from around the city. And so, as we're kind of planning for it right now, we're not quite sure what transportation will look like.
I just would like to point out that I have two children, and neither one of them would have had the opportunity to go to the school. When my oldest son was in middle school, I worked hours so that I could not drive him back and forth during school hours. And my younger son, his disabilities would have been too serious. So, I think that trying to invest in something like this is, it right away starts off by saying there's so many kids that can't be a part of it. So, I won't be able to support this. Thank you.
Ms. Oden?
I just have another quick question. We get so much from the state for each student. Will we lose that, that will still come to Nashua?
Still comes to us, yep.
It won't follow them? Okay, thank you.
And that's one of the, the purposes of retain, retaining and our students instead of losing them to homeschool or to a charter school, that it won't be a drop in our enrollment. It's, we'll still get the revenue from the state.
Maybe he can answer, but where does, where does the school get its money to run the school?
Actually, I went after the two years or it was for the first two years.
Other schools, do you think?
What?
Do you have any other locations yet?
No. The school that you want to set up, how are your schools making money?
It's all funded with the per pupil dollars that already exist in the district. So, that would be the plan after the two years, right? So, for the first two years, the Department of Education, the New Hampshire Department has funded this pilot. So, the Dover pilot, pod is a pilot, the Manchester pod is a pilot. This would be another pilot. And the idea being that if it proves effective, that it shows the school district can improve outcomes, retain students, attract families back, then the school district will want to continue the program. If after two years, you say, "This is not effective. This is not doing anything," you don't have to continue it. There's no commitment on the backend to continue running the program.
So, this is coming from the New Hampshire Department of Education that has a commissioner that is not supportive of public schools? I just kind of support this, I'm sorry.
Ms. Johnson?
Ms. Darling has a hand up first.
Oh, sorry, Ms. Darling.
In our CTE programs, how many students can do each program? Or do a program at any given time?
Like crossing over, like if they're doing culinary in cybersecurity?
How many students can do culinary at any given time?
I don't have the number right off the top of my head.
But is it every single child who wants to?
Um, no.
Okay, thank you.
I wish we had that problem, but it's, yeah, I mean, we only have certain amount of teachers and certain amount of sections and seats. But if 150 students sign up for culinary, I don't think we have the capacity, but we haven't had that issue either.
I say, I just remember way back in the day wanting to do the LNA class and was not the kid that got selected. So, thank you.
Ms. Johnson, then Ms. Lamphier.
Okay, so, I guess, let's say we do the pilot and then we go on. We see it's a success. So, in essence, the money would follow the student that would have been in the classroom, but it would follow most likely to the pod?
Yes.
Yeah. Because the, the student would be enrolled in the Nashua School District. So, the money would be there except it wouldn't go to their school. It would go to this, to the pod of learning.
Right. And so, a lot of the, the costs associated with it is the, you know, the salaries and benefits of, of the teacher, the cost for rent of a building, and then the educational supplies, so.
So, really, the only additional cost would be more of a building that we would have to worry about. I question, I'm listening to all these questions, and I think these are excellent questions. I'm not as fearful. I know what the Commissioner of Education does, you know? But I also look at this, that if we have another avenue for some of our students that need this, that some of these students maybe would have been trying to get into a charter school, but that didn't happen, and they can't quite fit in the school. They're having struggles in the middle school. And if this, if this, you know, pilot program works, I guess it all depends on the pilot program, where we see our students go. But if this is something that works and helps them, and we're still having the Nashua School District, the teachers within with the union, it's, it's, it's a win-win situation. And our goal is to make sure that our kids are in a good learning environment and the ones that are struggling are moving, and we're able to help them. That's what the goal is all about, keeping these kids from not dropping out, keeping them in school and learning and getting them over those little hurdles that they've had and getting them where they need to be. So, I would like to find out more about this program. I'm not, I guess, just learning about it, getting the questions answered. Like I said, if we could get on the little yellow school bus and see how these pods are working, I'd love seeing those things and, and seeing how the kids flourish. That would be great. But I think this is an avenue. Forget about the commissioner. You know, if the commissioner's giving money right now to have a pilot program to see if this will work, you take the money and you run with it. If it doesn't work, then we know. But at this point in time, whatever the district can get to help our students, I'll take it. Thank you.
Ms. Lamphier?
So, you said that, that it would be funded by a grant from the Department of Education. So, if, so currently, you have a pod in Dover and one in Manchester that aren't affiliated with the public school. If we decide that we do not want to proceed with this, will you still set up a learning pod in Nashua with the money from the, from the Department of Education?
The money runs out after two years, so.
But you would still take that money from the Department of Education and set up a learning pod in Nashua that would be unaffiliated with the public schools?
I, I can't answer that. I'm not sure. That's hypothetical. Right now, like, I, I really want to open this in partnership with Nashua. I think that's the right way to go, to demonstrate that public school students want to stay, that they don't want to just leave to homeschool or charter schools. So, that's what we're trying to do.
Okay, thank you.
So, I know the vote is a little later, but I really want to thank the board for this healthy discussion around teaching and learning, right? Of how do we present possible pathways and really have a conversation or questions and answers back and forth so that we can build something together? So, I appreciate all of your questions so that we can get more clarification on how do we move forward. So, again, I think this is another example on how we are learning and growing together. So, thank you for all the questions and, so, we're looking forward to the next steps.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so, we'll, we'll revisit that as it pops up in the agenda. If you guys continue thinking while the meeting goes on and have more questions, we can address them later. So, up next is looking for a motion to accept the consent agenda. However, the Finance and Operations Committee meeting minutes have been pulled out of the consent agenda because they weren't typed up yet. So, they're not in the consent agenda. There's a new agenda. So, I'm looking for a consent approval to accept the consent agenda. Ms. Raymond?
I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda with the Finance and Operations meeting minutes to come later. Well, no, that's not how I want to say it, with, with the exception of the Finance and Operations meeting minutes. Yes?
It is bright, isn't it? Jeez, Louise. Okay, do I have a second for that?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Ms. Lamphier. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of accepting the consent agenda without the Finance and Operations Committee meeting minutes, say aye. Aye? Any opposed?
Nay.
Ms. Brown, Ms. Johnson, Ms. Darling? Any additional items to add in? No. Okay, this brings us up to our first public comment question period. Can somebody give me the comment sheet, please? So, a reminder, three minutes per speaker. I'm going to crack down on it this time because I let everybody kind of, I was being too polite last week, but I will interrupt you when it's been three minutes. And I would appreciate it if you could wrap up shortly after that. At 15 minutes, can somebody make a motion to extend if we haven't heard from everybody yet? Okay. Thank you. I saw Ms. Cle had to step out. I know she.
And I am not her, obviously, but she gave me her letter and asked if I would read it for her.
Now, the light is on. So, again, I'm not, I'm not.
So, if you want to sign up and read it on your own, that's fine, but I can't have you speak on behalf of somebody else. It's, it's in our policy not to do that and to give up your time to other people, but.
That's totally fine with me, but I will.
Did you sign up on here?
I did not yet, but I can.
Okay. I'll have you sign up.
Okay.
Okay? And then.
Do you want me to sign up at the second one?
No, it's okay. What's your, I'll just put your, what's your name?
Danielle Walker is my name.
Okay, I'll get more information from you when you come up, but I have you on the list now.
Thank you, sorry.
That's okay. So, the first person up is Lisa Dunkley. Let me get my timer set up. And you guys understand, like, keeping the time is not to silence you, but it's to make sure that everybody's heard. But it's also so that we're not saying, like, oh, well, the people that we agree with get to talk for seven minutes, and the people we don't agree with have to be quiet after three. So, it keeps everything level and even for everybody on the board and for audience members.
Okay, I hope I can get through this.
So, let me, give me one second. Yeah, you want to be obnoxiously close to the mic like you're, like you're yelling at us all?
Okay. My name is Lisa Dunkley, and I have been a school employee for 40 years. Thirty-seven of those have been at Mount Pleasant. I'm here to talk about trauma-informed schools. A trauma-informed school is one which all teachers, school administrators, staff, students, families, and community members recognize and respond to the behavioral, emotional, relational, and academic impact of traumatic stress on those within the school system. Minus the system, Mount Pleasant is the village. We are the only school in the district that has continued trauma-informed training. As Dr. Allison Roy stated at a previous board meeting, Mount Pleasant is cited in her work as a leader in this field. Mount Pleasant School, 60% of our families receive free or reduced lunch services due to their economic insecurities. Within these numbers exist families who struggle daily with social, emotional, financial, and medical needs. Add to this our immigrant families who lack proficiency with the English language and face the challenge of navigating the clerical aspects of area agencies and support. These obstacles experienced by our marginalized families cause a ripple effect, which is often felt within the classroom as students are continuously challenged daily to meet the rigor of the district's curriculum. But no one gives up, and no one gets a pass. Instead, we call on the expertise of our trauma-informed community, which includes our social worker, homeschool coordinator, and members of the Mount Pleasant Created Trust team, whose model is currently being duplicated across several New England states. Over the past four years, we have immersed ourselves in this philosophy and become a well-oiled machine working collaboratively as we connect families with area agencies, all while keeping academic goals high. We connect students with social-based school counseling, assist with connecting families with medical agencies, and we help families complete forms that are required to access agency help. We use our training and years of experience to effectively communicate with our students, helping them feel safe in our school so that they believe that no matter the obstacles, they can achieve high academic goals. As long as Mount Pleasant exists, our students can count on trusted help through our trauma model and small class sizes, which allow for quick, proactive, and reactive responses to intervention. Yes, closing a school and increasing class size is one way to be accountable to our fiscal stakeholders. But when we, as a community, are talking about human capital, it is closing, it is closing a school in the best interest of students and families because undoubtedly, closing our school will devastate our students and undermine the last four years of trust built through our trauma-informed model. As elected board members, you are faced with a difficult decision, one we are sure that no one envies. The decision is in your hands, and we implore you to take the time to do your due diligence, to become informed before making this decision. Redistricting schools and closing a school are totally different animals. They both deserve full, independent attention. We. Oh, I'm done.
We hit the three minutes.
All right, well, I thank you for this time for letting me speak.
Thank you. And I, we're going to, sorry, I do have to say no, no clapping after just because, again, to keep things equal.
Of the rest of this for you?
Yes, please. Okay. I know, I keep waiting for, like, a lull, and I can, like, get in there nicely, but I, there's, there's no nice way of doing that, and I apologize. The next person is Tim Senat, Senate?
Got it right on the second one.
Senate?
Senate, yeah.
Cool. Okay, go ahead. I'll start the timer now.
All right, good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Tim Senat, and I reside at 62 Underhill Street here in Nashua. Although I'm not a Mount Pleasant parent, I am the father of a student in the Nashua School District whose school shares many of the characteristics that make Mount Pleasant such a unique and integral piece of this district. I, myself, am a graduate of Nashua Schools. I graduated from Nashua High School 20 years ago in 2003. Prior to that, I attended Penachuck Junior High School. However, during elementary school, I attended Charlotte Ave, Bicentennial, Boone Elementary, Menchaca Elementary, and Cunningham Elementary. If those last three names are unfamiliar to you, it's because they're located in Austin, Texas. But if you're keeping score, that nearly amounts to a new school for every grade level during my elementary schooling. I'm sharing this insight into my own public school experience because I recognize, as everyone in this room should, that young children thrive on consistency and familiarity in their learning environments. The K through 5 period during a child's life is a crucial time in their early development, and disruptions to that environment now, while seemingly innocuous from the perspective of grown decision-makers, can have lasting impacts throughout their journey into adolescence and adulthood. The Nashua School District's mission states that they educate the whole child to empower student success. And as such, the stakeholders in this city have a reasonable expectation that each and every effort will be made to rise to the occasion of that mission. You've no doubt heard and will continue to hear in a number of unique stories that emphasize just how integral the Mount Pleasant School is to the neighborhood and to the community that it serves. It would take in excess of the time allotted here tonight to justifiably illustrate the innumerable circumstances that this school navigates throughout its student body on a daily basis. But the common thread throughout them all is that the stability of a neighborhood school that is able to provide for so many Nashua students, many of whom lack such reliable consistency in their lives as it is, is invaluable to a child's development. To shutter such an important piece of a child's life To shutter such an important piece of a child's life at such a crucial time in their personal development could have lasting implications that they will carry with them even long after they've left the purview of this board. I speak from personal experience when I consider the hardship of navigating social environments, adapting to staff unfamiliar with my own ongoing challenges, being placed in learning environments incompatible with my own levels of understanding, and the constant challenge of new and unfamiliar environments between the ages of six and 11. My situation to a degree is extreme and you may say to yourself that it's only one school out of 12, to which I respond that it's only one school today. Underlying discussions have given rise to rumors of as many as four schools throughout Nashua being closed and in the absence of transparency, we, the public, are left with little recourse to determine what is fact and what is fiction. The time to open this process up to the public is now so that the complete and total effects of potentially shuttering such an important and vulnerable school can be fully explored and appreciated before greater damage could be done behind closed doors. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is June Lemon.
Good evening. My name is June Lemon. I live two doors down from Mount Pleasant Elementary School. My daughter Lucy attended Mount Pleasant and I was an active member of the PTO the six years she attended. Mount Pleasant is amazing and diverse. Children of every background and socioeconomic status are nurtured and cared for there in a loving and supportive way. The PTO works tirelessly to raise money so these children can have interesting programs and events at the school. No child at Mount Pleasant has to miss a field trip because their family cannot afford it. I am concerned about the total lack of transparency concerning this redistricting process. Yes, there's information on the website, but nowhere is there a full list of the committee members. There are minutes stating who attended each meeting, but no full list. Why? Why is none provided? Perhaps because it is not equitable. There should be the same number of teachers and parents from every elementary school on that committee. That would be what you would do if you were looking at all the schools as equal candidates for closure. But if you predetermined which school should close, why bother? I feel that the closure of Mount P is already a done deal. We of the Mount Pleasant community have watched this school board and preceding school boards provide Mount Pleasant with minimal maintenance for 36 years while other elementary schools in the district have received millions of dollars' worth of capital improvements. So therefore, now we need a lot of repair. I do not think that the superintendent appreciates the children who attend this school and what it is that they need. Take, for example, the expansion of the Nashua Meals for Kids program. I work for the Nashua Soup Kitchen and Shelter. The Nashua Meals for Kids program is a citywide partnership between the agency and the schools to feed hungry children. This partnership has been in place since 2017. We have served over 12,000 meals. Recently, on March 31st, 2023, staff from NSKS met with the superintendent and other district staff. They met to discuss the jointly agreed-upon plan at the beginning of this school year, which was to add five more of the highest-needs school to Nashua Meals for Kids coverage in addition to the five that we already cover. Meals for Kids now serves nine of the neediest Nashua public schools with our program. The most needy school missing from this coverage is Mount Pleasant, with more than 60% of the children on Title I. This was discussed during this meeting and we were told that this appeared, the lack of Mount Pleasant participating appeared to be due to an issue at the school, which was to be resolved as a result of this discussion.
Ms. Lemon, I'm sorry, I have to let you know it's been three minutes.
Okay, well, I just want to say that the issue has never been brought back to the soup kitchen and perhaps it was because it had already been decided to close Mount Pleasant.
Thank you. Next up is Estefani De Los Angeles.
Good evening. My name is Estefani De Los Angeles and I am a parent of two children who attend to Mount Pleasant. My daughter began her school career at Mount Pleasant School in kindergarten. She spoke English and Spanish and was in the ELL program. Throughout her time at school, she received a lot of support from the teachers and made many friends. My second daughter is also attending to Mount Pleasant. Last year, we moved to a new house in a, in a different part of town. We were very sad that our children will have to leave Mount Pleasant. We decided because of quality of the staff and the atmosphere at Mount Pleasant to get a variance. We now drive the children every day to a school so that they can continue to attend Mount Pleasant. This school has been a constant, solid part of my kids' life. Please don't close it. Mount Pleasant is welcoming its community, its security, its a place of welcome. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Carolyn Bork? Burke? Bork? Bork, good. Oh, take your time, don't rush. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Carolyn Bork. I'm the EL teacher at Mount Pleasant School. Do I have to give my address? Nine bells to be, okay, good. So, there's a saying in Spanish, quien sabe dos lenguas vale por dos. One who knows two languages is worth two. If this is true, then we have not 50, but over 100 ELL, or English language learner students represented at Mount Pleasant School. As we heard tonight, all students benefit from a stable environment that they're comfortable with and ELLs in particular go through an often arduous and long journey just getting to the United States, even before they begin school. Once here, most immigrants, including our ELL students, go through about four documented stages. The first stage is euphoria, well, when many experience that initial period of excitement about their new surroundings, which I like to also call the honeymoon stage. Then comes culture shock, when many experience anger, hostility, frustration, homesickness, or resentment towards a new culture. Gradually, they move into acceptance, when they accept their different surroundings. And finally, there's assimilation or adaptation when ELLs may embrace and adapt to their surroundings and their new culture. And this makes me think of Edwar. He's been in the United States for about two years and is likely between the culture shock and maybe the acceptance stages. Every day, he walks by my room and says hi, or just gives me a smile, sometimes even a grimace, depending on his day. Some days are good. He's able to participate in class and he's happy. Other days, he just shuts down and covers his head. I recently asked him about his coming-to-America experience. He told me that he and his dad, along with a group of Hondurans, left their house one night. He had to say goodbye to his mom and to other family members as they could not make the journey yet. He told me that they walked a lot. They continued walking until they got to a river which they had to cross. Then they walked some more. Finally, they arrived in the United States where they were detained for a while. Then they made their way to Florida where he began school in the U.S. Then they moved to New Hampshire and he was enrolled at Dr. Crisp. They moved yet again and Edwar is now at another school, Mount Pleasant. Thankfully, he's been here for the whole school year at last and at least he, and at least for now, he's somewhat settling in. He's finally at a place where he can settle down and just be a kid. I've made a connection with him, as well as many other teachers, and discovered that he loves to eat. He's often hungry. He also likes video games. He likes to draw and play outside with his friends. But many days, he just misses his mom and he needs a hug. And I think sometimes, who will hug him if we close? I know I've built trust with Edwar and many others like him. Building trust, according to a publication I read today from the WIDA Consortium website, who does our testing, is a key consideration for working with families in general, but it's crucial for establishing relationships with families from groups that have been historically marginalized by schools, and this includes families of language learners. Research shows that a lack of trust is often what keeps these families from spending time at school. However, for many schools and families, building trust is often easier said than done. It takes time.
I'm so, this is like the most unplayed thing I've ever had to do, but yeah, it's been three minutes. I'm so sorry.
So that's just, I'm almost at the end anyway and I just wanted to say that I've been at Mount Pleasant for 25 years and the district for 32 and it's different at Mount Pleasant. I came back to Mount Pleasant and spent my last 25 years there and we are like a family and I just, it's, it's a school, it's a home away from home school and thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Yep, so we have two more people signed up to speak. Do we want to extend or can we just have consensus to finish up with the list?
We can extend to make a legal motion to extend.
So Ms. Johnson makes a motion to extend?
I'll second. I don't care.
You take my second or Ms. Brown's second. I think we have...
Ms. Lambfier, you get to decide. You're writing it down.
And a Miss Mealing on the board to let people have their say.
I, yeah, I think Ms. Brown first, so. So does everyone want to vote now?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Deborah? I'm gonna get this right. Adesick? No?
Adazick.
Adesick?
Adazick.
Adazick?
Yes.
I am uncultured.
It's okay. Just say Smith. Good evening and thank you for letting us have this time at the podium. I'm just gonna talk briefly about a Title I school, which is Mount Pleasant. Title I is a federal program, Part A of the Elementary and Secondary Education Act. As amended by the ESEA, Every Student Succeeds Act, provides financial assistance to local educational agencies, the LEAs, and schools with high numbers or high percentages of children from low-income families to help ensure that all children meet challenging state academic standards. Federal funds are currently allocated through four statutory formulas that are primarily on census, poverty, estimates, and the cost of education in each state. Unfortunately, not all residents complete the census, census forms, so it is difficult to determine exact numbers. As a Title I school, Mount Pleasant staff is held to a higher standard than a non-Title I school. Title I paraeducators, which I am one myself, must have a minimum of two years of college or a paraeducator II certification, even though we receive no extra pay. Mount Pleasant has 200 students who are legally entitled to services under Title I. If these children are sent to another school, it is hard to believe that they will receive the same level of service. If they do not receive these services, their parents can sue the Nashua School District and, as the Department of Justice has already had issues with how the district has implemented some of its federal mandates, it behooves the district not to make more mistakes in this area of servicing our students and the families of our Mount Pleasant community. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And just to show that it's not just your writing, I can't read, I can't read my own as well. I have Danielle and I think it's Walker?
Yeah.
Okay.
Me. Hi, I'm Danielle Walker and I am, am I, okay, sorry, before my three minutes starts, am I allowed to just read what she wrote? I know you're not supposed to speak on behalf of someone, but I'm allowed to read her letter.
You can read it, but at three minutes, I will just give you a heads up.
She kept it short and big font. We're good. Okay, so I'm Danielle Walker. I live at 55 Wood Street and I am reading for Patricia Cle of Nine Maywood. Patricia Cle of Nine Maywood says, "I am here as the Ward Three alderman and resident. I want to address the potential closer of Mount Pleasant. I say potential, but at, but this feels like a done deal. Based on the data that I can find relative to capital improvements to our elementary schools, I feel that the lack of major dollars being spent on Mount Pleasant is, is that it was given a death sentence so long ago. Sadly, it seems to fall on this body to perform the actual sentence of death. It's been over 36 years since the last major renovation to Mount Pleasant and then I hear, Mount Pleasant needs so much work to stay open. Well, of course it does. Would you consider allowing your homes or any property that you own to go 36 years without doing some form of major renovation? As I met with residents within the Mount Pleasant district, more than one person told me the same thing about Mount Pleasant. When I heard that my child had to go to Mount Pleasant, I thought, oh my God, my child has to go to Mount Pleasant. Then, as I walked in and met the staff and my words changed, you, oh my God, thank goodness my child is going to Mount Pleasant." That was me. She's quoting me. Like literally, I did not expect to read this. I said that. I moved from Charlotte Ave community to Mount Pleasant community and I thought, oh my God, my kid has to go to Mount Pleasant. Then I walked in, I met Pam Bu, the preschool pre-K teacher there, and fell in love with everything that school had to do. Sorry, I, this is back to her. Mount Pleasant is a walking school that has an incredible caring staff and a strong PTO that watches over these children. Back in 2018, the city was awarded a Safe Ways to Grant, to Safe Ways to School Grant, which is due to be sent within the next year. The closing of this school could negatively affect the city getting that million-dollar grant. This grant came about after Patricia took the direct Public Works for a walk on Lock Street. Due to the major cost of such a renovation, we successfully sought out a grant. While it is assumed that the grant will be presented over the next year, the city has petitioned for an increase in the million-dollar grant to cover the inflated cost. Closing of Mount Pleasant will not only affect the students and those families of those students, but it will, it could cost us the million-dollar grant. You may think that you are saving monies by closing the school, but in essence, you may actually be costing the city over a million dollars and once again, flipping your nose at these residents who deserve to be heard and to have a better, safe community. One quick statement. Remember that if you bus these students to other schools, you are removing their ability to be part of any after-school activities, including tutoring. Many of these families do not have the ability to drive to this new school. Yes, parents can Zoom to teach, to speak to teachers.
Sorry, Ms. Walker, I do have to, it's been three minutes. I apologize.
Oh, it's okay. Sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, that, that, that's everybody for public comment. Thank you guys for being graceful with the three minutes that, I think as a polite person, interrupting somebody is like the worst thing you can do. So that was very hard for me and I appreciate it. Okay, so now we are on to superintendent's comments, so I will give the floor back to Dr. Andre.
Thank you. I begin my comments this evening to bring you up to date to the work of the redistricting committee. As I said before, redistricting is important to be sure we are leveraging our material and resources in the best way possible to support our students. The work of the elementary school redistricting committee will be wrapping up. We have two more committees, one met today, one's meeting tomorrow, and then there'll be a work session for the board on May 2nd. Just to remind everyone, the redistricting committee has been reviewing the boundary lines across all 12 elementary schools in the current configuration and reviewing the boundary lines in a configurate, configuration that would include close, closing of one of our elementary schools. We need to review both configurations because of the drop in enrollment over the last 10 years and because of the uneven class sizes across our elementary schools. To stay current with the development, redistricting plans, please log on to our website at Nashua.edu. And I was gonna mention it later as an update, but just for an FYI, there are some upcoming community forums. On May 15th, there'll be a community forum from 4:00 to 5:50. On May 17th, and that's at Nashua North Media Center. May 17th, there'll be a community forum at Fairgrounds Middle School from 6:00 to 7:30. And on Thursday, May 18th, there'll be a meeting at Nashua South in the media center from 4:00 to 5:30. And we also have a community forum set up specifically for the Mount Pleasant families as well. So, so those are upcoming community forums. So staff and student achievement. This week, I would like to bring attention to several, several great happenings in our schools. First, I want to give out to, give a shout out to Nate Burns, principal of the Nashua High School North for running in the Boston Marathon this morning. This is his second current consecutive marathon Nate has run. I just want to applaud his incredible discipline. He ran most of the race in the rain, finishing just, finishing in two hours and 53 minutes, so sub-three, three hours. So we're incredibly proud of Nate, both for his dedication there, but also his leadership at North. So Meals Matter, my guess is many of you remember the Meals Matter. Nashua High School North student voice members are looking to repel 24 floors to participate in the United Way Over the Edge fundraiser in support of Meals Matter. Their goal is to raise funds to eliminate lunch debt for all schools, for all students across the schools. Please help them with this noble effort by logging on to the Nashua North website. A link on their homepage will direct you to the Meals Matter dedicated fundraising page. In terms of energy, finally, I want to share some great news from Plan Ops. The array of solar panels at Penachuck Middle School were turned on last week. Penachuck joins Dr. Crisp Elementary School, Fairgrounds Middle School with solar panel installations. It's gratifying that we will be producing our own electricity during the daylight, daylight hours, thereby decreasing our utility bills. The installation of the solar panels is just one of, one part of our commitment to provide healthy learning environments for students and staff. As you remember, we recently invested nearly $800,000 and completed the installation of high-tech air purification systems in eight of the 18 schools. We are one of the first school districts in New Hampshire to install this cutting-edge air quality technology in our schools. Thank you.
Now the board responds to superintendent's comments. Now, the Board responds to Superintendent's comments. I'll start over here with Ms. Darling.
No comment.
Okay, Ms. Raymond?
Thank you, Dr. Andre, for bringing to our attention the community forums. I know that we've all gotten a lot of feedback from people who are concerned about the redistricting process, and I, only speaking for myself, but I'm hearing from other community members, like, all the board members don't know what's going on. And I think it's important for us to know that there are dates coming up, both for the Board to be informed what the committee's doing, and also for the community to have those forums and provide some feedback. So, I'm just going to ask that when you send out your email that you send out, like Tuesday or Wednesday after the meeting, every time that you make sure that all that is included in there, because I didn't write it down fast enough. Thank you.
Ms. Lamphier?
No comment. Thanks.
Okay. In regards to the Males Matter, I am very split on this because my daughter is one of the crazy kids jumping off of the building. So, I don't want her to do it, but I do want her to help raise money. I'm a little worried she's not going to listen to me after she's like, I can jump off a building. But, good, good for those, good for those kids. Ms. Brown?
No comment. Well, my comment's for you. I'm pretty sure she's going to be wearing a harness and not just leaping off the side.
No jumping, repelling. No, she told me, I got, I got a text from her, she was like, I'm jumping off the building. Madeline and I are jumping off a building. And I was like, this isn't the kind of text I want to get. She's like, for Males Matter, for United Way. So, I guess donate or not.
No comment.
Ms. Johnson?
Put a parachute on her, she'll be okay. No comments.
Right, I'm, she'll bounce. Student member of the Board comments. Who's going first this time? Mr. Farley, have at it.
Thank you and good evening. Saturday, April 8th, Dante and I attended a conference at Goffstown High School where we met with other Board of Ed student reps throughout the state of New Hampshire. I think it was a very valuable experience, and it brought up a lot of ideas that we could potentially implement into our district. Also, this morning, my second letter to the students of Nashua North was posted. This letter is designed to inform the student population about the upcoming board meeting agendas. I expect, I expect that these letters will continue to adapt and evolve, and so I'm excited to see where they go. Lastly, I would like to acknowledge Nashua North's Principal, Mr. Burns, who ran in the Boston Marathon this morning. I think I speak on not, I think I speak on behalf of not just North students and faculty, but everyone across the district in saying that we are very proud of your accomplishments. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. I hope everyone's doing well. First off, I hope everyone is getting excited for April vacation, which obviously starts next Monday. In honor of that, this week is Spirit Week. Tomorrow is Twin Tuesday, so just dress like someone else, and then you could see the classical classrooms for the themes for the rest of the days. And then also tomorrow night is the annual South Jazz Night, and will include bands from the three middle schools and both high schools. It is free and begins at 6:30, and again, that's at Nashua South. Earth Day is Saturday, April 22nd, and in honor of this, Planet Earth Club is hosting an Earth Day Fair on Friday during E Block, Third Block, and Fourth Block in the Career Center, in which different clubs will come and either talk about different environmental topics or just do something related to Earth Day. The next Drivers' Ed Lottery will be Monday, May 15th at 3:30 in the lecture hall itself. And then, as for athletics, spring sports are definitely now in full swing, and I'm not going to read all the events because it would take the rest of the night, but all those events and games can be found on the Nashua South Athletics website. Also, please check your classical classroom to find a survey that has to do with current summative assessment recovery policies at South and kind of in the district, but this is just for South students. The survey was just released today, and last time I checked, it has already received 31 responses, at least for parts of it. So, that's good so far. And I also plan on hosting E Block meetings, like Warren does, either bi-weekly or monthly beginning in the near future, for students to come and express their questions and concerns that they'd like to see or learn about from the Board of Ed. Be sure to be on the lookout for more details in the near future. And lastly, I certainly did enjoy attending that meeting at Goffstown High School with board reps from around the state. One key takeaway I got from that meeting was that one district, and I forget which one, but they allow student reps to have a sort of symbolic vote that doesn't really count towards decisions that the Board makes, but acts as a way to represent student opinions. I just feel like, kind of adds to the student rep position and also just can help represent student opinions, as mentioned here. And again, from that meeting, this one, it was kind of just from more southern or kind of central schools, mostly around this area, though. But next year, it looks like they might try to include all districts or a lot more. So, thank you.
Thank you. And in regards to voting, you guys can always speak up on anything that you want with anything that is presented in here, but I do like the idea of a symbolic vote. It's just we do have a policy that says you guys are non-voting, but I don't mind, I don't mind including you guys in that. We can, we can brainstorm that, but I think you make some really good points, and I'd like to, to honor them. Now, we are on to, Ms. Johnson, do you want to give us an update on the Committee on Budget, which we are now done with?
We're done with, so I guess there's no meeting tomorrow on Wednesday night, so everybody enjoy that night. No, last week, the budget was presented to us. There was a vote of six to one.
Uh huh.
Of course, Mrs. Johnson voted against the budget, to be expected. The budget now is being sent to the Board of Aldermen for them to review and pass it. If they pass it, add or, they can add, they can subtract, but they can't touch a line item. And then it will come back to us probably for a final vote on it. If they've made any changes to it. Okay, so that's an update on the budget, and now we're on finance and ops.
Floor stays yours, Ms. Johnson.
I know, what can I ask for? We had a meeting Wednesday, April 12th at 6:00 PM in the boardroom here regarding the finance and operations meeting. So, the first thing on the agenda, I move to approve the Eagle Scout project at the Franklin Street School as presented.
Second.
Does anybody need any update? I made sure that the presentation was put in the packet. No, but did anybody see the packet?
Yes.
On E-line? Okay.
Do you want to just give a little blurb?
Yeah, it's going to have to do with like, a little, I'll just show this to everybody. It's a little project on, to be put on the fence. It's going to have like, be like, some type of like musical instruments that the kids can touch and play with. The Principal Greg Warren came to our meeting, and Matt Walters, who's a junior Nashua High School South, is a scout, and he gave us a wonderful presentation. He was excellent. And where it's going to benefit our students at Franklin Street, we decided, yes, we want that on the fence.
Okay. So, Ms. Johnson made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Okay, any other comments or questions? Okay, all those in favor of approving the Eagle Scout project at the Franklin Street School as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, and I will sign this right now. Right, this is it?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, with that being approved, I move to approve the Central Office Security Improvement Project, not, up to $23,000, funding to come from escrow account 91.1010.14600.
Second.
Do we need an explanation on this? I think this is self-explanatory.
Okay.
Okay, so all those in favor of approving Central Office Security Improvement Project up to $23,000, funding to come from escrow account 91.1010.1, 1.146, what? Mr. Donovan?
That's a typo. It should be up to 20,000, not 23,000.
Okay, thank you.
I'll accept a friendly amendment.
Ms. Johnson, do you want to amend?
Yes, I'll amend the motion to approve the project up to 20,000.
Up to 20,000. Ms. Brown, you continue to second?
I do.
So, all those in favor of approving Central Office Security Improvement Project up to $20,000, funding to come from escrow account 91.1010.14600, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Recommendation to approve the contract with CSS for $55,324 for the upgrade to the North Boardroom, funding to come from $50,000 from escrow account 91.1010.044600, and $5,324 to come from an excess escrow amount 91.1010.1014600.
Second.
God, those zeros, pointless.
We can, we really know how to make things boring. Does anybody want to speak to this? Mr. Donovan?
Well, this will provide the upgrades we've been requesting and Jimmy, et cetera, at Nashua ATV for a long time. This room is about 20 years old now, so we'll have new microphones. Hopefully, we'll have no more sounds emanating from the wires and the microphones. And we'll have some, uh, project, new projectors and some audio for hearing assist citizens, so. It's about, there's probably another 40,000 that they would like to add later, but I think this is a good first step.
Yeah, that's what Mr. Johnson had reached out and let, let us know what was going on. Does this include, I know that we had been talking earlier about allowing people to Zoom into meetings. This is not including that. This is just to make sure that, that, remember when we didn't have the microphones and we had to borrow them because we had issues?
Correct.
Just for that.
Yeah, this will not allow the Zoom or put the TVs up. That would be part two if we choose to do that later on.
Okay, so we can wait for state traction on that? I know that was.
This, it will totally help all of like the buzzing noises and background noises when we've had troubles with the feed for online recording. That should all be entirely resolved through this.
Yep. Okay, does that ever impact the recordings that Central Office, like?
Does what, the noise?
Mm-hmm.
You'd have to ask Tara that, but I would assume it does.
They're saying yes. Oh, that must hurt. Okay. Mr. Warren? Mr. Farley?
If this passes, when would we expect to see these updates?
Once the, all the equipment comes in, but I'm hoping over the summer.
All right, thank you.
Yes. Okay, any other comments or questions? Okay, so all those in favor of approving the contract with CSS for, as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
I move to approve the contract to GMI Industries in the amount of $175,440 for specified paving at Fairgrounds Elementary School, Broad Street Elementary School, and Franklin Street School. Funds will come from the school district deferred maintenance account.
Second.
Thank you.
Do we need any?
Do you want to speak to this?
It's just paving, the driveways, that's basically it.
Yes, it's paving driveways, and if you recall, when we made the purchase of Franklin Street, we got a $25,000 discount, so that'll, because those lots are in very poor shape if you've lived over there, so.
Yep. Okay. So, all those in favor of awarding the contract to GMI Industries as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And last, but not least, I move to accept the March 2023 transfer report.
Second.
Thank you. That is another one that's self-explanatory. All those in favor of accepting the March 2023 transfer report, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Am I looking at the wrong agenda? I don't have anything for Committee on Policy.
So, the New Hampshire School Board Association's policy catalog is down. I don't know when it will come back. So, we're unable to get that, the legal references that we like to have when we're considering policies. So, the Policy Committee, Committee met on April the 10th, and we had a work session where we pulled up from a variety of different districts all the policies about policies, which sounds really boring, but I thought it was actually pretty interesting. So, just like we have asked all of the other committees to look at the policy governing how their committee works, Policy is starting the work of looking at how Policy Committee works in other districts, how it works here in Nashua, and how we think it ought to work. And so, we started that process, and we will be bringing that to a future meeting. There are a number of other policies that the Policy Committee is considering right now. One is regarding snacks and drinks in schools, and there's some grant funding requirements. We're starting to look at the middle school leveling policy and some other things, but all of that work is being farmed out to internal committees within the district. So, Food Services is looking at foods and snacks. The Middle School Steering Committee, which is made up of teachers and administrators, is looking at leveling. And so, at this point, we are waiting for feedback from them before we bring it forward. So, hopefully, May, we'll have some more stuff for you.
Perfect.
But April was really, you know, elbow grease kind of a day.
Work session.
Yeah.
Perfect. Okay. Ms. Brown?
So, we met on April 10th for Curriculum Renovation Committee. We did not have anything to vote on and bring before the Board, but as an overview, we talked about the intersection of Amplify Science and our ELA curriculum, Eureka Squared implementation update, and the next steps. We've been piloting the Eureka Squared as opposed to the original Eureka program, and it's getting rave reviews from teachers and students and even parents, so that's a good thing. We presented, they presented the teachers and Dr. Sarfey. The Zern data, which is showing that students who used Zern at least 20 sessions, had exponential growth in their math scores, and same with the schools that have been participating in the Lexia program for elementary reading program, have been seeing some really impressive scores, and the teachers can get real-time data on how the students are performing. But nothing to vote on this evening.
Perfect. Do you want to add anything with Dr. Sarfey?
I apologize that the materials are not in the packet. We'll make sure we get them to you.
Okay. Thank you. Now, off to Ms. Oden for Human Resources.
Okay. I recommend to suspend rules to consider items from the HR meeting held earlier this evening.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. All those in favor of suspending the rules, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay. I recommend to approve the personnel recommendations of April 17th, 2023.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Any comments or questions about the personnel recommendations? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Recommend to approve the administrative recommendations of April 17th, 2023, the Director of Transportation, Mark Norris, and the Principal of Elm Street Middle School, Dr. Katrina Espirza.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any comments or questions in regards to the Director of Transportation or the proposed principal for Elm Street Middle School?
I did participate in the Elm Street Middle School, and I heard a good review of transportation. I think we got two highly qualified people for both positions, and I'm very happy that administration was able to be successful in, in gaining the, the employment of these two individuals.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the administrative recommendation of April 17th, 2023, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Congratulations. I know we already encouraged them to go home, but we would like to welcome our new, our new members of the team. Excited to see how they fit in and, and what kind of work they do. Okay, so now we're going into liaison reports. Who's doing the, the JSSBC one? Is that you? Okay.
Okay, at the McCarthy School, we're repurposing, so a compactor was relocated from Elm Street to McCarthy, and we're also using a pottery wheel from Elm Street, so they founded a home at McCarthy School. And also, another good update is that the special education bathroom will have a hoist so that people with disabilities can be moved safely from one place to another when they're in the bathroom. At Franklin Street School, the kitchen design has been issued, the Health Department is reviewing it, and they're gonna, they have to redo the elevator, so the scope of the elevator redesign is beginning. At Virchill and Main Dunstable- Birch Hill and Main Dunstable, construction will start over April vacation. That's mostly putting up fences around the perimeter because the portable classrooms will be coming in June from Elm Street Middle School as soon as they're finished with them. The primary goal at Birch Hill and Main Dunstable is to add new HVAC system and close the open concept schools so that there's new classrooms, which would be healthier for the kids, not, just the open concept wasn't really working. It should be completed by September 2025. The children will need, will need to be relocated to the portable classrooms as well as, they'll have five temporary classrooms in the gym. And some good information on funding, the ESTR funds, we can use the ESTR funds for anything that we commit to by September 2024, and we can submit requisitions until September 2028. So we'll be able to use all that funding for school construction that was given to us by the federal government. So I think that, you know, Alderman Dowd, the head of the JSSBC committee, has done a great job making sure that we use all the money that's available for us. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Now let's go into unfinished business. Dr. Andre, the floor is yours. Looks like we're discussing the K-Pod.
Yep. So just to continue the conversation from earlier, that I'm looking for recommendations to endorse the superintendent to explore the K-Pod, K-Pod learning community in the Nashua School District and work with legal counsel on the contract details to be presented to the BOE once we review and answer some of the questions tonight.
Okay. So I'll make that motion. Does anybody want a second so we can continue on with the discussion? Thank you, Ms. Brown. So to continue on with the discussion about this, did anybody come up with more thoughts or comments or questions? I have, I have one. So I'm wondering if this is a successful program, and we're using public school teachers to head this after-the-two-year kind of data collection and it being implemented by an outside source, if it's something that is successful, would we be able to go back to the Department of Education and say, this is a workable resource that we'd now like to bring into our schools and maybe expand and have them within, like, I'm thinking, like, off in a little area within the schools?
So, and I'm still here. So we thought about multiple scenarios kind of moving forward. So we thought the original pilot would be offsite, but we did actually look at models that potentially could be at one of the middle schools. So are we utilizing classrooms or spaces within our current school structure, which might be an option? One thing that we were considering at the beginning is that if the pilot was at Penachakra, Elm Street, or Fairgrounds, there's a lot of anxiety being in that learning spaces. Would that be the first space for the pilot? So people are looking to get away from that learning environment. So having the program in there might deter from people wanting to enroll. But we did have a conversation, and K-Pod has been very flexible on saying, if it meets your needs, then we could work with you. So in two years, if we're expanding, it might be, again, an innovative program within the school setting that we might have learning coaches at that place. But I think that would be a good problem to have.
Right. Yeah, successful programs are always welcome. Any other comments or questions on this? Oh, I'm going to go around this way. So students first, and then Ms. Raymond.
I would like to advocate my support for this program, even though we don't have all the answers to our questions at this moment. If my understanding is correct, then this vote will just be to continue the conversation with K-Pod and not to make any binding decisions. And I don't really see why we would shut down just exploring the program. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Costellano?
Yeah, so I also think it's a great idea. I know there's some concerns related to like the limited accessibility of this program, but I personally feel that the program won't have any sort of negative effect. I feel like it could only really help. And of course, we could always go back away from it if we feel it's not working. And then, yeah, it should just be really a way to see if this innovative learning style of which was mentioned is kind of, kind of like an old style of learning, but with new technology, just a way to explore if it's the right way for the future.
Ms. Raymond?
Thank you. So I have some serious questions and concerns about equity when it comes to this program. I have some serious reservations when it comes to kids with 504s and IEPs and various types of disabilities. I am really worried that it's going to disclude kids. Having said that, I also think that there is space in our public school system to make accommodations for kids who have extraordinary needs, whether those extraordinary needs are they need extra help, or they need extra challenges because of where they're at. And I, I like the idea of meeting kids where they're at and helping them to move forward wherever they are on, you know, a continuum of abilities. So to me, I'm trying to think of this program the way that we have Clearway, the Clearway Alternative High School, which we contract with, and we have Brentwood Alternative High School, which is in-house. I'd feel a lot more comfortable with the program if it was a district program as opposed to a contract, but we do have Clearway, so we have kind of a roadmap of how that can work for some students who don't do well in the traditional high school, but still need a free and appropriate education for their needs. So at this point, my vote is to move forward with the next steps and have Dr. Andre take some of the feedback he's gotten tonight and work some of that out and bring it back to us. What I hope not to see is a situation where only people who have independent transportation are able to have their kids in this program, or only kids who, you know, have no, no special needs are allowed to be in this program. That, that would lose my vote. But if we can work out some of these kinks so that some of our exceptional students who need to be taking classes on VLEX because we simply don't have the options in-house, or some of our kids who really need that one-on-one or that more quiet environment because of their, their learning style or because of anxiety, I would like to see that. So I'm willing to explore it, which surprises me. I typically disagree significantly with some members of this board when it comes to these types of things, so.
Any other comments or questions? No, I'm also, I'm excited to see where we can go with this program. I think one of the, the great things that I saw come out of COVID was we, there, there were kids that did flourish with, with that non-traditional school experience, and especially managing the anxiety, and especially with middle schoolers where, where it can be very overwhelming. And they don't always necessarily have the right words to share what they're feeling. We just see it in their work and in their behavior. So I think this is going to be an exciting way to see how we can expand upon what was a really hard time with remote learning and, and moving forward with supporting those students who, who were successful in that. So if there is no other comments or questions in regards to this, I will, we can vote on it. Okay, so all those in favor of having the superintendent explore a K-Pod learning community in the Nashua School District and work with legal counsel on contract details to be presented to the BOE, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay. Thank you very much. Motion passes. We look forward to seeing what you guys present to us next. Thank you. Okay, back to you, Dr. Andre.
Yep, I'm looking for a recommendation to approve the Cliff Year of Book Grant Award of $25,000 for the Mount Pleasant Elementary School for the 2023-24 school year. Just a little background, it's one of, we are one of five awardees in the state of New Hampshire.
Yes, it looks fantastic. That was, that was great. And I'll make that motion. Anybody want to second it?
Second.
Ms. Brown seconds. So all those who are in favor of approving the Cliff Year of the Book, Cliff Year of the Book Grant Award of $25,000 for Mount Pleasant Elementary School for the 2023-2024 school year, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Back to you.
So tonight, I'm just looking for a recommendation to, from the BOE, to give the authority to both the superintendent and the BOE president to sign the certification pages of the New Hampshire Department of Education assurances, or in your packet.
I will correctly sign every single page without having to come back this time. Does anybody want to make that motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Any second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Ms. Raymond.
I do have a quick question.
Yep.
So do we each need to sign and affirm that we've read it anymore, or is it now only that the president has to sign that she has provided it to us?
Mm-hmm.
That one?
Yes.
Okay. I just remember how difficult it has been in past years to track down every single member.
Yes. No, we've figured out how to make it easier.
Fantastic.
And by we, I mean Dr. Andre, and I just show up and sign. Mr. Donovan?
No, I have the pack, the signatures over there.
I know. Ms. Cincella already texted me or emailed me. Okay, so all those in favor of allowing me and Dr. Andre to sign the general assurances on behalf of the board and the school, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And so the last is, I'm looking for a recommendation to approve the municipal leasing agreement. And Mr. Donovan, I'll give you a little background.
At the, I believe it was the last board meeting, we approved, this is for the copy machines, we approved a lease agreement, but there's specific wording that the lender would like us to approve. So the motions. Yes, I got it right here.
I've got the motion from the last time.
Yeah, this, do you want me to read the motion, or do you have the?
What, what page is it on in the packet? The four-year lease agreement was specialized, no, that's that one. Is it written in the book?
Oh, it's in the book.
It's in the book.
That's all I wanted to make sure that we had easy access to for Ms. Lampier. So.
Would you like me to make the motion?
Yeah.
Yeah, Ms. Lampier can just read it.
So the motion is recommend to approve that the board approve the proposed tax exempt lease with MST Government Leasing LLC for the purposes of leasing, refinancing, and funding photocopy equipment leases, including consultant fees and related costs of issuances of such leases in an amount not to exceed $385,306.42 and an interest rate of 4.54% per year through August 1, 2027. Does that sound correct, Mr. Donovan?
That's correct. That's just another way of saying what you approved was $107,502 for four years.
So I'll make that motion. Does anybody want to second it?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Any comments or questions? Seems to be a carbon copy of the last time we talked about this. That needs to stop. So all those in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Go back up to the.
And then there's another, there's two motions in there. Don't jump it.
Yeah, there's another one.
Okay.
Let me read it. Okay, so recommendation to approve that the board authorizes the superintendent to execute and deliver the tax exempt lease with MST consulting on such terms and conditions discussed and provided to the board and to execute and deliver any such documents required to execute the contract with Specialized Purchasing Consultants, Inc.
I'll second.
Are you making that motion, Ms. Lampier?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And Ms. Johnson seconded. Any comments or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And there's one more? Or is that it? Okay, perfect. So this brings us up into our second public comment. Can I please have the sheet? Thank you. Okay, so we have a couple people signed up. I would like to call up this again three minutes. I'll put the timer on. Let me get this going first. Okay, so Alex Homola. Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I just want to say.
Is the microphone on? Sorry.
Yes, I'm sorry. I don't really like microphones. I just want to say something about Mount Pleasant closure. Remember that if you bus these students, you are removing their ability to be part of after-school tutoring, any sort of friendship activities like that. Many of these families don't have the ability to drive to a possible new school. Parents can Zoom, of course, to speak to teachers if they have that ability, but what if the student misses the one and only bus? That student stays home. What if the student wanted to be a part of an after-school activity or even play with a new friend? They can't if that, if it isn't someone who can take the bus with them. Right now, we're dealing with many bus issues, and we are going to consider closing a walkable school so that we can now bus them. You have to admit that even if it's delayed a year from now, it's unlikely that the city or first student will have enough drivers to enhance or create multiple bus trips each day. I would also like to address something that Dr. Andre mentioned. When is the community forum for Mount Pleasant? I heard other dates, and perhaps I missed it, but I did not hear the one that was going to be directly affecting our community and my neighborhood. I'd also like to know when that's going to be announced to our community and to the families in the area, to the school, to the taxpayers. Many of my direct neighbors didn't know anything about a potential closure or redistricting or, or the like. All of my neighbors whom have either current students in the district or have students who have graduated, who were obviously shocked for multiple reasons. I would also like to ask, these ESTR funds, I apologize, I honestly don't really know exactly what that's about, but I keep hearing them discussed, and I hear mention that they're being used for other schools. I'd really love to know which schools, how much, where is that money going to Mount Pleasant, why not there? And those types of answers that I feel like I'm not quite getting yet. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, that's a lot of information that we've been going over for the past several years. So I think I'll reach out to you about it. Maybe we can have a chit chat, and we can kind of go over what's been happening. But I'll, we've been emailing, right? Okay, I'll email you tomorrow. Okay. Johanna Marston?
Hello, I'm Johanna Marston. I teach third grade at Mount Pleasant. I reside in Manchester, but I would, I put down the 10 Manchester Street for the list. I was not planning on speaking tonight. We're all doing major amounts of work to fight this, this fight that we have all of a sudden had on our shoulders. And so as I'm, as my team, I, my family, my school family are sitting there, I started becoming concerned about something else. So I was doing a little bit of research while I was sitting there. So I figured, why not take the time and just address it right now? I just wanted to talk very shortly about Dr. Andre's proposal about the K-Pods, the presentation. Just so you know, we do that every day. We personalize our instruction every day. We are fortunate, as are you, that we have small class sizes right now. I, and I'm just one of 19 teachers in my building, plus par educators, plus reading specialists, plus UA teachers, plus ELL. We see that kind of growth that Mr. Kumar talked about. We see it every day. How lucky are you? How lucky are we? How lucky are the families of Nashua School District to have these wonderful small class sizes? How great of an opportunity would it be to use the redistricting committees How great of an opportunity would it be to use the redistricting committees, the meetings, to use the, and redraw lines so that we could even them out? We personalize our reading instruction, our math instruction. We, we talk to these kids and get to know about their lives because we have small numbers. Don't ignore the data that says how important this is. We don't need outside sources, at least at the elementary level, to accomplish these goals, to look at the entire child. We do this every single day. Thank you.
Thank you. Deb Zeeman? Did I say that right? Thank you.
My name is Deb Zeeman. I have two children in the Nashville Public School System, both graduates from Mount Pleasant, and both are currently at Penachuck Middle School. I want to thank the district for letting us know tonight that there will be public forum as we move forward with decisions being made about real people, real kids, you know, real, real hard decisions. I just, I didn't actually plan to talk tonight either. I just want to make sure that I sort of implore the district to publish as much information as possibly can be published prior to those public forums. If there are three schools that may be changing, and I'm sure there's three plans that accommodate those changes, I think we, as the public, deserve to kind of have those ahead of time so that we can come to a public forum, informed and ready to have a conversation. And I feel like as a parent, I'm pretty dialed in. I'm pretty plugged in with my kids' education. I was pretty involved at Mount Pleasant, and I'm a little surprised by everything. So if I am, then I think there's other parents out there that are in the same position as I am. So I just kind of wanted to put on record, I hope that we can get some prior information so that we can come to those meetings really informed and ready to have a real conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. And that's it for second public comment, but I'm wondering, Dr. Andre, will you indulge me a little bit in kind of answering some of their questions? Because I know the board is looking for, maybe you can speak a little bit about what will be presented to us, because the board ultimately decides on whatever, there will be multiple plans presented or one, but talk, talk, talk us through that.
Sure. And I appreciate having the ability to respond to some of their questions. So first, when I spoke earlier, I did not have the Mount Pleasant date, but I was just reminded it's May 9, so that'll be coming out shortly, but that's solely for Mount Pleasant will be May 9. And also, some of the work, obviously, that we're looking at on our May 2 is that the elementary subcommittees have been going through multiple scenarios. So when we're ready for the public forum, we didn't just want a blank sheet, so it'll be actually some of the results of all the work so that we actually have something tangible to look at, to comment on, give feedback if tweaks have to be made prior to the board decision. So right now, everything is just a lot of learning going on, looking at the data, and so right now, it's a messy situation. So it's the work of the subcommittee to narrow down three or four scenarios so that we can actually give something tangible to the public to comment on, what did we get right, what didn't we get right? So sometimes, you know, when you go to a public forum, we're like, give me your input without anything to comment on, it just, it can go haywire. So we just want to make sure there is a tight agenda. You know, some of the information will be shared is the projection, the enrollment projections over the next 10 years, some of the data that we're looking at, and then what are the two, two or three scenarios so that we can, again, get public comment at that point. So we just wanted to make sure it wasn't too loose and overwhelming so that we couldn't get specific feedback on what did we get right, what did we miss? So then, by the end of the month, we can take the public comments through the forums and give that back to the Board of Education so that they can make a form decision. So again, the public forums were delayed so that we could get some of the work, so that we can give something tangible back to the community to actually comment on without going to the community first and just having a blank sheet, and we would be all over the place. So those community forums, you will have enough information to come in with informed questions and then kind of question on, give us comments on what did we get right and what did we miss? So that should be coming. Like I said, this, our last subcommittee meeting is tomorrow. We're looking forward to, right after April vacation, to be posting some of those, or right after May 2, to be posting that all on the website.
And, and the way, the way that we're kind of talking about running this is, is kind of similarly to how we presented the GPA stuff, which was, it gets sent to us, we look at it, it's in a public packet, we're going to have a meeting where people can come in and talk to us, and then we'll have another meeting where we vote on it. So we do want to give you guys the opportunity to come, and you've been sharing your comments during public comments, but have a specific meeting where we can invite everybody from the community, maybe a long meeting, but you know what? It's sometimes necessary. And then we'll hear everybody, we'll review the process, we'll review what has been presented to us, we'll come back to the table. Are there tweaks? And I'm, I'm thinking like, I don't get detail focused a lot, but for some reason with addresses, I do. It's just my weird thing. But looking to make sure that we're not splitting up neighborhoods or streets, that there are natural lines happening so that kids can play together. I keep thinking about, like, I don't want to interrupt the after-school bike riding sessions because kids are going to different schools. So with the Nashville, if you look at the map, there are natural dividing lines that create these neighborhoods and keeping them together, and that's what we review when they come to us. People who, you know, know kind of more about the natural lines of places, like, I could do this for hours, but looking at the maps that are presented to us and how things are redistricted, and we can look and say, yes, this is a great way of keeping the kids together so that their after-school time is reflective of the enjoyment that they're having during the day at school, too. So that will be presented to us, and then we'll vote on it after that. So once we get those preliminary pictures to us is when we'll look to you and say, what do you guys think? So it allows kind of the subcommittee groups also to engage in those conversations, which are hard and challenging to have because we're talking about hard and challenging things, without them kind of being bombarded in the grocery store about, who do you think you are? So it gives them the space to have that conversation, and then you guys can give that to us when it's presented to us. So I hope that answers some questions. Go to the forums, continue emailing me, I appreciate it. And I think I may have overtalked that a bit, but does anybody have, on the board, does anybody have any more questions about that? No? Okay. If you guys have any, email them later on, but I appreciate the engaged discussion, Dr. Andre, and letting us speak outside of the, outside of the agenda on this. So now it is board member comments. I will start this side now with Ms. Gilio, board member comments.
It's better if I don't talk tonight, so.
Okay. Ms. Johnson?
I could talk for you if you want me to. No. I'd like to thank everybody for coming tonight and listening to everybody's concerns and the comments. Thank you very much again, and I think that's just about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Oden?
No comment.
Thank you. Ms. Brown?
I want to thank all of the parents and teachers that came out to speak so passionately. And I also want to say specifically to Ms. Zeeman, request for transparency is something that I always would advocate for, so thank you for that specifically. And also, I want to always say how impressed I am with our student board members and the fact that you are even able to develop your opinions kind of on the fly as we're learning, just like we are, and I think it's pretty impressive. So, thank you.
Ms. Lampier?
I wanted to thank everyone for coming, and yeah, I, we'll, we listen to everything you're saying, and we will keep it in mind when we have to make decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Raymond?
I have no comments tonight.
Ms. Darlene?
No comment.
No comment? I have nothing more to add. I think I've, I've talked a lot, so I would be looking for a.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Who seconded? Ms. Gil, that's the one thing you're going to say tonight. Excellent use of, of words. So on the motion to adjourn, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We are adjourning at 8:07 PM. Thank you very much for attending. Have a great night.